This regular meeting of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees is called to order at 7:02 PM on February the 4th, 2016. At this time, please join me in standing as Richard Fleming leads the board's opening prayer and remains standing as John Matthews leads the pledge of the United States flag and the Texas flag.
Please bow your heads. Dear Father, thank you for the many blessings that you continue to bestow upon our district, continue to guide and lead our district's leadership. May you always give us the wisdom to meet the needs of the future and continue to guide us and our students and give them the wisdom and vision and courage. In your name, Jesus, we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Ladies and gentlemen, I will pass on just a comment. This meeting is one of the few that you can say the pledge to the Texas flag and they actually know what the words are. And we attend many meetings that are not associated directly with public education and it's the quietest room there is when it comes to the Texas flag. So, thank you. As a district, we dedicate all of our effort and resources to our goal of high achievement for all of our students. And the board uses this goal to guide us in all of our deliberation, decision, and actions. You will get to see all of the deliberation, decision, and actions in open session. However, there may be items for discussion that fall under the closed-meeting law stipulated by Texas Government Code 551. These items typically deal with personnel matters, consultation with our attorneys, and real estate of which we can go into closed session. That being said, for the record, all board members are in attendance and we do constitute a quorum and can conduct business on behalf of the school. As required by Board Policy, BBD Local, at each meeting of the board, the president shall announce and the minutes shall reflect the name of each board member who has completed the required training, who has exceeded the required hours of training, and who is deficient in the required training as of the date of the meeting before any vote of the board is taken. Let the minutes reflect at this time that all members of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD are in the process acquiring the number of training hours required for 2016. That being said, we are all in compliance as of this date. We will now proceed with Agenda Item 2. Dr. Burns, it's all yours.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Goode. Members of the board and for our audience out there, thank you for being here tonight. I think it's no secret that we have one goal and that's high student achievement. And so, we felt it appropriate to start each board member or each board meeting talking about student achievement. And so, we've been doing a series of student achievement presentations about a book called 21 Trends for the 21st Century. And tonight, you're in for a real treat because we're going to talk about technology. And I might just have a quick question. How many people have the same phone they had 10 years ago? My point. It keeps changing, right? And technology is something that we want to keep up with because it's what our students need to be able to enter their world prepared and able to succeed. So, having said that, Ms. Warnock.
We want to start off by thanking the board for the investment that they're making in the technology of the district. So, the board has dedicated resources to improve the infrastructure and mobile device access for the students in CFB, which is exciting. And so, to share our presentation tonight, we welcome Kathy Webb, our Chief Officer of Data and Technology. Ms. Webb?
To kick off tonight's presentation, we're going to start with an interactive activity. So, you will need your computer or mobile device in just a moment. But before we begin, I want you to consider two statements. So, if you'll look up on the screen. Students today depend on blank too much. They don't know how to write and complete that sentence. We're going to use Poll Everywhere in order to capture your responses to the blank. Students today depend on blank too much. So, if you'll either go to the website or if you'll text the message, we'll capture your responses right there on the screen in a word wall. We'll give you just a couple of minutes.
So, if you text 22333, text to that number, text the message KathyWeb741 to the number
Okay, I'm going to give you just a couple more seconds and then we'll declare the poll closed.
It's closed.
It's gone. Okay. So, if you'll look at the responses up there, many of them apply to technology. It has something to do with using a device of some sort. So, we're just going to use technology as our word for the moment. So, let's say that students spend, today depend on technology too much. Do you agree with that? I don't know. Now, let's turn to a neighbor and let's have a quick discussion to complete the second sentence. Given the fact that we said students depend on technology too much, they don't know how to write, complete that sentence. Turn to a neighbor and complete the sentence.
In cursive. In cursive?
Okay, thank you for participating right there. I see, I saw some people give some very clear answers. I could even read your lips on some of those. But Angela Brown, would you tell us what you and your partner decided?
They don't know how to write.
They don't know how to write in cursive. That makes sense because they're doing all of this a lot and so they don't spend a lot of time doing this. But I think I'm guilty of that as well. I can type faster than I can write, so I don't spend a lot of time with cursive anymore. Dr. Schaefer, what did you and your partner decide?
They don't know how to write a complete sentence.
Well, if you think about technology and social media, on Twitter, texting, it's economy of letters. And so, you're not using a lot of words in complete sentences. You're not even using syntax most of the time. You'll be interested to know that this is an excerpt from a quote. So, let's look at the actual quote now. Students today depend on paper too much. They don't know how to write on a slate without getting chalk dust all over themselves. They get, they can't clean a slate properly. What will they do when they run out of paper? 200 years later, educators still have apprehensions when new trends are introduced. This uneasiness continues today with a rapidly changing technology landscape. However, this really shouldn't come as any surprise because Solomon, a long time ago, said, "What has been will be again. What has been done will be done again. There's nothing new under the sun." Technology's all around us. What do we expect? But what do we expect to happen in our schools, too? What's the role of technology in the classroom? William Fariter says, "Technology's role in today's classroom is to give students opportunities to efficiently and effectively participate in motivating activities built around individuals and ideas that matter to them." You may recall this image from the December board presentation on personalization. "We must be mindful of the ways technology can be used to level the playing field by personalizing education to meet the needs and interests of our learners." Sheldon Berman, Superintendent of Schools in Eugene, Oregon, notes, "Technology will become the great equalizer across the globe, giving access to education, knowledge, and wealth to even more people." When we think of technology, we often visualize some kind of a device. However, the author of 21 Trends for the 21st Century that Dr. Burns alluded to reminds us, of course, technology is not just a device with a keyboard. In CFB, technology does not exist in isolation. The data and technology team is comprised of four smaller teams working in concert with each other. We have an infrastructure team, we have an instructional technology team, we have a data team, we have an assessment and accountability team. As our large team develops its strategy, we must be mindful that technology is ubiquitous. And to our students and young adults, technology just is. As a result, mobility, access, security are the concepts that we use to guide our actions and our decisions. Emerging technologies validate the notion that attention must be given to these three areas. But as we consider our strategy based on mobility, access, and security, we must be mindful of the implications for education. New technologies are developing at an exponential pace, making technology the second-leading trend that is most pervasive and impacting of our education system. To keep pace in that rapidly-changing world of technology, there are going to be associated costs. And we must make a commitment to any time, any place, any pace learning for our students. If you think about it, merchants and businesses offer free Wi-Fi access as a marketing tool. We, too, must seek ways to level the playing field for all learners. Many of our students have computers at home, but of those students who do, some don't have Internet access. With a greater emphasis being placed on online textbooks and educational resources, we must explore ways to provide access beyond the school walls. And as we encourage the use of technology, we must teach our students the importance of being good digital citizens and prepare them for appropriate use in social media. But of utmost importance, we must provide resources for teachers to become facilitators and orchestrators of that learning. We must ensure that students leave CFB with a knowledge of and not just a knowledge about technology. Students are very comfortable using technologies outside the classroom for entertainment and social connections. We must ensure that students leave CFB with rich digital learning experiences to be competitive at the next level of their journey. Take a look at these images. For those of us who are old enough to remember Dick Tracy and his two-way wrist radio and Agent 86 with his shoe phone, the implications for education should have added importance. We have witnessed what was once imagined become reality. Think about that for just a second. And now, as you read this quote, remember Maxwell Smart and his shoe phone, remember Dick Tracy and his two-way wrist radio, and consider how technology has made that which was only in our imagination become reality with the introduction of smartphones and Apple Watches. Beyond imagination, a world of connections shape the future. Our students may not be familiar with Dick Tracy or Maxwell Smart, but they are well acquainted with mobile devices and from a very young age. Raise your hand if you have a child, a grandchild, or a little friend born in 2010 or later. Okay, consider this. The Wi-Fi version of the iPad went on sale in the United States on April 3rd, 2010, just six short years ago. Our kindergarten students and children born after 2010 have never known a world without an iPad. What will emerge in the next six years? What's ahead for our students? Oops. Sorry. I got the wrong slide there. What's ahead for our students as they continue their journey through education? So, if you think about what's in someone's imagination that has not yet become realization, we can't educate today's students for tomorrow's challenges with yesterday's schools. Ms. Warnock, that concludes this presentation.
Thank you. The technology in the video that we just saw is currently available. So, that is not imagination. It is real. It is certainly cost prohibitive at scale at this point. But what we know about technology is that the costs will decrease over time and the investment that the board considers and continues to make as we think about resources to build our infrastructure, our hardware, our software, and to provide the professional development that teachers need to be prepared for tomorrow's schools, we consider to, you know, as we think about our facilities and how we expand that work, we know that thinking about what our students need to be competitive in a global world is important. We appreciate your dedication of resources to do that. Thank you.
Board members, questions?
I just have to keep fifth graders so they can fix my computer.
I think one question I do have, though, and maybe Ms. Webb, maybe this is for you. As we reflect upon this, what are the potential areas that we, as a board, need to be aware of and maybe be investigating so that we are ready, when the time comes, to be able to, shall I say, integrate that new form of technology into the classroom? How we, how do we get, how do we move into that cycle?
We have to build our infrastructure first. And what Ms. Warnock alluded to is that some neighboring schools are beginning to build that infrastructure so they're ready as the new technologies come into place. Currently, in 2018, access points for wireless will be taken on a different standard. We currently are putting cabling in place so that we're ready to go to that next level with that. So, we're constantly aware of that and we will keep you aware of what's coming down the pike. One of the most important things is that access beyond the school walls. There are a number of ways of achieving that and we'll be talking to you all about that in the near future to start investigating what it's going to take to make that happen.
Okay. And that brings up an area that we, as trustees, need to be aware of because we have to be thinking that the cost associated with that may be beyond the traditional budget that we put together. And so, it has to become, shall I say, a partnership with the community to be able to do that. So, then we have to be able to go to the community and talk to them about this and the costs associated with it. And there's a time lag there. That's why I bring that question up.
Yes, sir. At one point in our recent history, technology investment was about innovation. And at this point, technology investment annually, it's like investing in indoor plumbing. You know, it's something that we have to have to function as a district and that innovation piece to really move to the forefront is additional expense than just maintenance of our current systems.
So, Dr. Burns, you have the challenge of keeping this board informed in such an adequate manner that nothing becomes a surprise to us and we can be working on it as we discuss these opportunities with our community.
Yes, we'll do it. And I'm confident with our, from our students to our staff, they will keep us up to date on what we need.
Okay.
I am confident in that.
Very good. Thank you for the presentation. We'll move on to Agenda Item 3, which is, Agenda Item 3 is recognition of special guests and announcements. And Dr. Burns, back to you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Goode. Members of the board, audience, our first recognition tonight will be to honor a very group of very, a group of very important professional staff members. We call them our VIPs. And our VIP program has been in existence in CFB for over 25 years. This program is to honor teachers, nurses, librarians, and other campus staff members for their commitment to CFB. So, on behalf of the board and myself, we want to thank each of you for all the work that you do every day to make student achievement happen. And this year, we've, we've offered a little different touch for you. And that is that in the gray bag you have at your place, you will find numerous thank-you notes from, could be from students, could be from staff, could be from parents, because we really believe that the thank-you that the most, the thank-you that you will most remember is that you receive from your students and your parents in a handwritten note. It was not texted, okay? It is in your gray bag in the old-fashioned paper and pencil and we think you will read it and remember, okay? We also have another bag for you. It has Brookhaven Country Club on it and we want to thank our sponsors, Brookhaven Country Club, because they've honored you with a little bit more tangible thing, okay? And in that, you will find some gift certificates for memberships to Brookhaven, including golf lessons, tennis lessons, some meals, and most important, their appreciation for what you do as well. And so, we want to thank our Brookhaven Country Club School Business Partnership. And at this time, we're going to recognize our VIPs right up here in front. And so, when your name is called, we'd like for your family members, friends, and other staff here tonight that are here to support you to please stand when your VIP is introduced. And now, at this time, Mr. Goode, would you join me in the front?
Mr. Goode, members of the board, Dr. Burns, and colleagues. My name is Stephanie Jimenez and I have the pleasure of serving as the principal of Vivian Field Middle School. It is my great privilege to introduce Ms. Sarah Nickerson as our ELA Department Manager, GT Liaison, to be recognized as Vivian Field's next member of the very important profession Let me begin with the word finally. Finally, Ms. Nickerson acquiesced to becoming our VIP. After being asked by three principals four different times, it was the great Luke Getty that convinced her to give in. With one line, this Green Bay Packer fan proudly known as a, as a cheese head, agreed to the request. What line did Mr. Getty ask her, you may think? He said to her, "Sarah, would Brett Favre turn down MVP?" She turned on her heels and immediately said, "I'll do it." Our VIP MVP started in CFB 15 years ago at Vivian Field after transferring over from the corporate world as a customer service supervision and senior supervisor. When Sarah was drafted for the Viv Nation, she immediately excelled. Sarah is certified to teach almost any subject a middle school can offer and her customers, our Viking students, are clamoring to learn English from her. One of her fans noted, "You can tell Ms. Nickerson really cares about kids because she never sits down and she teaches us all the time, no breaks, and she is crazy smart." A teammate said, "I've started calling her the data queen. She does an amazing job of analyzing and organizing data to help us learn more about our students and she's always willing to lend a hand." And finally, for this football fan, I couldn't give up without a cheer. Another teammate gave her the perfect acronym. Give me an S, sassy. Give me an A, adventurous. Give me an R, rebellious sometimes. Give me an A, astounding, and an H for hard-working. If I had to choose just one word to describe Sarah, it would be fiery. Her passion for soccer, her wonderful husband Bobby, who she hunts with, and her beautiful daughter Claire, who's here tonight, and her students. Those are the things that she is most passionate about. In a soccer game, players at times will receive a red card for being way too emotional or wound up during a game, which results in the player being removed. Ms. Nickerson brings that same passion to the classroom. Sarah will take a red card when fighting for student achievement. She holds adults and students accountable for their students' achievement. On her conference period, she's been known to walk into a department member's classroom and say, "Who do you need me to work with today?" She works tirelessly to lead her English team to achieve our goal at Vivian Field of every Viking ending the year on grade level or above in literacy. She has partnered with me and the district ELA coaches to lead a literacy initiative on our campus. She takes adults on face-first. She will ask you hard questions and expect honest answers. And she will ask you, "How are you implementing the curriculum and moving your students? I want to know how they're doing." I am not excluded from these hard, honest conversations. With the Super Bowl this weekend and football on everyone's mind, I want to encourage you to catch the fiery spirit of Sarah Nickerson. The students and staff of Vivian Field adore their superstar reading/writing Vince Lombardi-style ELA head coach. Congratulations to you, Ms. Nickerson.
Dr. Burns, Mr. Goode, members of the board, my name is Laura Hershner-Rader and I am a- a proud assistant principal of McLaughlin-Strickland Elementary School in conjunction with Mr. Stephen Seifelt and DeeDee Lacy, principal. We are here tonight to introduce to you our newest member of the very important profession of teaching, Mrs. Catalina Rodriguez. Catalina Rodriguez has two daughters, Alicia and Emma, and is married to Juan Pulgarin. As a testament to their generosity, we have seen all of them help at school from time to time. Catalina has been an educator for 11 years and lucky for us, four of those have been in CFB, where she teaches bilingual kindergarten. At first, she was a bit worried about teaching five-year-olds because she previously taught second grade, but it has truly been a perfect match. Her bilingual kindergarteners excel through cooperative learning, accountable talk, and shared writing. Catalina is caring, continuously models a growth mindset, leads with innovation, and sets high expectations for both students and teachers. Catalina is a loving teacher with a big heart. Her students have wonderful things to say. Aileen said, "Mrs. Rodriguez is a good teacher. She teaches us how to learn, how to read, and how to write words." Mayroni shared, "I love all her books." Francisco commented, "She's great and has my last name." Finally, Amy and other, several other classmates agree, "Mrs. Rodriguez is the best and she's pretty too." Like most Tigers at McLaughlin-Strickland, Catalina believes full-heartedly that we are always learning and growing. She makes all learning look easy because she is so receptive to feedback from coaches and colleagues. This in turn also makes her a great team leader and committee member. The last two years, she has volunteered to serve on our data committee to become knowledgeable of STAR data and the TEACs vertical alignment. She wants to make sure that primary instruction is aligned to the rigor of the state expectations. She brings awareness to her team through vertical planning and professional learning communities. Early last school year, we moved from turning in lesson plans to reflecting on our lessons and using our reflections to drive our instruction. Mrs. Rodriguez innovatively led her team by creating a Google document where teachers each have a color assigned and can blog about the lessons. Teachers ask for suggestions, write their own reflection, and offer up help to their teammates. This was so effective with kindergarten teachers, we implemented the idea schoolwide and continue it in practice. Catalina is pioneering and reflective about her teaching practices. She holds herself and her team accountable for teaching students at a high level and is always looking for ways to make, to better make that happen. She trained to test our incoming kindergarteners and newcomers. She volunteers her time to come up in the summer to test these students so that we're ready to go on day one of instruction. In addition, this year, she has taken on creating Google Excel spreadsheets to track Kinder students' data in math and reading to guide instruction and tutoring in Kinder. Catalina is a quiet but strong force when it comes to student achievement. She is passionate, kind, and a wonderful role model that many look up to. She is quick to make new Tigers feel welcome and has a smile that welcomes all. We, as well as her family, are so proud of her. McLaughlin-Strickland and Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD are indeed fortunate to have Mrs. Catalina Rodriguez as a member of the very important profession of teaching.
Good evening, Mr. Good, Dr. Burns, and members of the Board of Trustees. My name is Melanie McGee and I am proud to be the principal of Ted Polk Middle School. It is my honor to present to you the newest member of the Polk family's very important profession of teaching, Mr. David Berger. This is David's fourth year at Polk and in CFB. He began his career teaching sixth grade math and for the past two years has taught seventh graders. Mr. Berger doesn't just teach students to solve problems, he challenges them to think mathematically. But even more than that, David has a desire for his students to succeed in life. I should tell you the story of how David came to be a Polk Panther. In the summer before my first year as principal, I was frantically trying to hire teachers. Out of the blue, I got an email asking for an interview for a math position. When I met David, I was struck by his passion for math and helping young people understand the why behind the answers. He'd never been a teacher before, but as many of you know, sometimes you just have to go with your gut in hiring, especially when school's just weeks away. Before he left the interview, David looked at me and said, "If you hire me, I will make sure that you never regret it. No truer words have ever been spoken, but I will let others tell you why." I gained a whole new respect for David when I found out that he visits students at AEP just to let them know that they had not been forgotten. That is the epitome of establishing great relationships. "You inspire me to be as honest, dedicated, and compassionate to all around me like you are," and that's from his department chair. "You are an awesome male role model. You are an ambassador for students." You can see the theme runs, that runs through our staff members' comments about David. David came to CFB several years after graduating from Chico State in California as a son of a nurse who flew in tonight to be with us and an employee of a charitable organization, serving others was in his blood. He started tutoring while still in high school and eventually became Director of Service Learning at Chico. He still has that laid-back California vibe. David admits that his journey to teaching was a circuitous one. He recalls losing his way after college and working a series of dead-end jobs. But it's like that saying about Texas, "We don't care how long it took him to get here. We're just glad that he did." He is also humble enough to acknowledge that his reasons for teaching have changed. What began as a way to have a steady income is involved into a full-fledged passion. As he says, "I teach because I love what I do. I love what I do because I am making a difference, no matter how big or how small. No matter how significant that difference turns out to be, I know it will be a positive one. I teach because I want to be a part of the movement, to do away with the disproportionality that can be found in too many disheartening statistics, not just in education, but in all different facets of our society. I teach to change lives for the better, one seed at a time." One student's comment sums it up. "Thank you for being there when I needed you. You have always pushed me to strive for better." And my tenure as principal, Polk has not had our school's unsung hero also awarded VIP status in the same year. In David's case, it's obvious to all on our staff and our students that the work he does every day, from mentoring our young men in our program, playing soccer after school on Fridays with students, tutoring on his lunchtime, creating and leading a summer leadership academy for boys, teaching a summer accelerated math program, and being a mentor to new hires, is very well-known. For all of these reasons and so many more, Ted Polk Middle School and CFB are indeed fortunate to have Mr. David Berger as a member of the very important profession of teaching.
I'm Amy Miller, principal at Rosemead Elementary. Tonight, we are here to honor Ms. Jennifer Ross. Have you ever met someone who just makes you smile the moment she walks in a room? Someone who instantly makes you feel comfortable, special, and can laugh with you like an old friend? A teacher who can grab the attention of a class of 20 Kinder students with a look and ease the first-day fears of those same 20 Kinder students and their parents with a smile? Well, we have such a person at Rosemead Elementary. Her name is Ms. Jennifer Ross and it is my sincere pleasure to introduce her to you as our newest member of the very important profession of teaching. Ms. Ross leads her class with ease and grace, dances to silly Go Noodle songs, fixes boo-boos and bug bites, introduces kids to the love of learning, teaches reading, math, shoe tying, and nose blowing. She's also well-known as the occasional resident matchmaker among her Kinder students. Rosemead knows what I'm talking about. And I mustn't forget to mention that somehow, after all of that, she also gets them to read at at least a Level D to please her crazy principal. But what really stands out when I think of her many contributions to our Rosemead family is her dedication to keeping up staff morale and her thoughtful and caring way of remembering to put others first. She helps us to remember to have fun and celebrate our successes as a team. She volunteers for committees, recognizes when there is a need, and leads the pack. She does all of this with a can-do attitude and a positive smile. Ms. Ross has a heart for others and it truly shows in her daily actions and words. Ms. Ross is such a joy to have on campus and a treasure to us all. She's my VIP and I truly appreciate her many contributions to Rosemead. Rosemead Elementary and CFB are indeed fortunate to have Ms. Jennifer Ross as a member of the very important profession of teaching.
My name is Shoshawn Campbell, the principal of Thompson Elementary, and I am proud to present to you Ryan Decoy Queen, our VIP for this year. Remember the first time you saw a strange shadow in the sky? It looked to me as if it was a large swooping bird, but no, it was not a bird, it was a man with an invisible cape. A Superman. A man with mental toughness and extra effort that touches hearts of people everywhere he goes. A man that is selfless, always willing to step up and support anyone in need. Did you know this Superman has been hiding at Thompson for the past four years? He has been undercover as a superstar cougar connecting with little people, staff, and fostering relationships within the community. He didn't realize his cover was blown the day that he stepped into my office to eat lunch with the little challenging cougar in me. I saw his compassion that he showed this student as he listened with sympathetic ears and sought to understand how he could connect with this cougar. I began to observe this man and soon realized, he always appeared at just the right time. Are you having a problem with Google? Do you need a good laugh or someone to talk to? Or how can I help? You can always find him somewhere ready to jump into action and he may have a camera to capture a photo for the yearbook. Staff members describe him as kind and firm, calm, creative, and easygoing and intelligent. It has been reported to the Cougar News Network that Mr. D stops whatever he is doing and patiently helps him with technology. He's done this many times, the staff members have reported. He shows me, he shows an interest in me as a person and seems to care about me. He is quiet, but is always thinking and working on creative ways to make progress as a professional and as a teacher. His kids truly love him. Ernest Hemingway once said, "There is nothing noble in being superior to your fellow man. True nobility lies in being superior to your former self." These are the words that Mr. D lives by. Dr. Burns and members of the board, I would formally like to introduce to you our very own superhero and very important profession of teaching, Ryan Decoy Queen.
school then worked together throughout the year to eliminate barriers and to construct new ways for families to further support student success. The National PTA School of Excellence designation is awarded when families feel that the school has achieved a high level of engagement. More than 40 years of research proves that when families and schools work together, student achievement increases, schools improve, and communities grow stronger, said Laura Bay, president of National PTA. National PTA Schools of Excellence are faithful examples of what can be accomplished when schools and families collaborate. Blalack Middle School PTA was recognized for their leadership and commitment for partnering to support student success and continuous improvement. Here with us tonight is last year's Blalack PTA president, Kathryn Carlin, who accepted this award in August. Also with us tonight is the current Blalack PTA president, Lisa Marino. On behalf of CFB ISD School Board of Trustees and Dr. Burns Superintendent, we thank you for your outstanding service and for sharing this award with us this evening. Congratulations on this accomplishment and for your work with our students and community to help reach our goal of high achievement for all students.
Texas PTA understands and acknowledges the role which educators play in the success of our students. Texas PTA recognizes deserving educators not only for their service, but for their dedication to the mission and purposes of PTA. Dr. Lance Hamlin worked alongside Blalack PTA to achieve the many accomplishments recognized by the National PTA.
We are proud to recognize Blalack Middle School Principal, Dr. Lance Hamlin, for the prestigious award Secondary Principal of the Year. Dr. Hamlin is known for praise over punishment. This is a policy implemented under Dr. Hamlin's leadership. It was created to celebrate the positive behaviors the students exhibit on campus. Dr. Hamlin has been a dedicated principal at Blalack Middle School since 2011. Congratulations, Dr. Hamlin, for this honor and on behalf of the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District, we want to thank you for leading our students and staff to high achievement.
We're not done, we're not done. Tonight, on behalf of the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District Board of Trustees, we honor Happy State Bank for their involvement in our partnership and education program. We are extremely grateful to have our relationship with Happy State Bank. Their generous outreach is an example of what is possible when a public school and a community of caring individuals work cohesively to be partners in the education and welfare of our students. The partnership between Happy State Bank and CFB has had a very significant positive impact on the students at Goode Elementary School. Happy State Bank has a strong connection to community. Happy State Bank believes in helping build felicitous communities by investing in programs which support affordable housing, economic development, financial education, and projects that strengthen the communities they serve. Happy State Bank employees are currently serving friends and neighbors at 34 locations located in Abilene, Amarillo, Dallas, Lubbock, and throughout various Texas panhandle communities. In 1997, Happy State Bank started the Kids Banking Savings Program. This program was developed to teach students the value of saving while introducing them to the many important aspects of banking. Kids Bank Savings Program was introduced to our students at Goode Elementary School in September 2015. To start the program, Happy State Bank brought a display to the Goode Elementary Meet the Teacher event. The Happy State representatives talked to parents about the savings account program. They answered questions from individual parents so that parents would feel comfortable with the program being launched at Goode Elementary. The Kids Bank program supports efforts in the area of social skills as students learn the responsibilities of their job in addition to proper customer service behavior. In Happy State Bank's efforts to encourage families to begin saving for their children's future, the bank does not assess service fees or require a minimum deposit requirement through this program. Students from Goode were selected through an interview process to serve as tellers on Goode Elementary Banking Days. They were given official bank badges, they were guided through counting money, creating deposit slips, and were trained to provide excellent customer service to their fellow students. Penny Coney, the Principal of Goode Elementary, is thankful for this partnership. Penny has said, "Happy State Bank has been so warm and encouraging to our kids. Every kid's deposit, whether it's 10 cents or $10, is treated the same." A big congratulations for saving money. Above and beyond the banking program, Happy State Bank awarded Goode Elementary with a $1,000 grant. This grant was used to purchase costumes for Goode Elementary's new Ballet Folk Lyrical Troop. On behalf of the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District Board of Trustees, and with James Goode, President officiating, and Dr. Burns, Superintendent presenting, it is our privilege to present this recognition of thanks to Happy State Bank. Their service and funding exemplifies a meaningful partnership between our community and schools. Accepting this plaque and representing Happy State Bank is President Lisa Clausen, along with Hunter Lord, Tonya Cowgill, Shannon Von Campan, and Linda Crank. And now, we would like to invite some of the students from Goode Elementary to model the costumes which Happy State Bank so generously furnished.
Mr. Goode, members of the Board, that completes our recognition for tonight.
Very good. Allow me to make a few comments. First, to our VIPs. We do thank you that you were willing to come this evening. I understand there had been some concern in times past about not, shall I say, not wanting the recognition. But we are truly honored that you will allow us, the Board, to hear the things that all of you do with our students in the classroom. These are things that, whether it be your passion, your innovation, and just your relationship to draw out the very best in all of your students, those are things that we, as Board Trustees, do not get to experience. And so, this is our one opportunity to be able to learn about you and the success that you are having in a classroom, and especially that we can say, "Thank you." We also have another, or other people that we're truly thankful to also. The accomplishments of our school district has been exemplified by our PTA. The Council of PTA many times works somewhat quietly, and we do not realize what they do for our school district until these awards come out and we think, "This school district has a lot of active parents participating through PTA and are helping develop the quality of the education by supporting those campuses." And of course, it also manifests itself in its leaders. And so, Dr. Hamlin, we are truly thankful that you have agreed to continue over these past years at Blalock Middle School. Hopefully, you're going to hang around for a number of years, that we will be able to see you once again and share with you your accomplishments at Blalock Middle School. And finally, it does take a village to raise the kids. And because of the relationship that we have been able to develop and nurture with businesses, especially to Happy, we are truly thankful for what you have been able to accomplish through your partnership with Goode Elementary. You have to appreciate what you have done because sometimes you don't always see that. But we who monitor public education, we are able to look and say, "We can see and tell the accomplishments of these children through the industries and the businesses that work with them, encourage them, and promote various programs that those children want to be engaged in." So to you, to all of you at the bank, thank you for what you have been able to do in working with Goode Elementary. That being said, I think probably some of you are thinking tomorrow is a school day, and I'm not going to stay here all evening. What we will probably do right now is take a short recess. However, to the audience, before we take that recess, our next agenda item coming up after we take this recess is Audience for Guest. And Audience for Guest is a mechanism we use to glean information from our constituents. We'd love to hear from you. We will give you three minutes at the mic to talk to the school board. If you would like to speak to the school board on any matter related to public education, we can't help you in some areas, please fill out the form that was outside the double doors and give those forms to Ms. Sharon Scrivner. With that being said, the time is 8:00, and we will recess for 10 minutes. Board members, we will reconvene this meeting at 8:09 PM. And we will move to Agenda Item 4A, which is Audience for Guest. As stated, this is our opportunity to hear from our constituents. We request that the comments pertain to public education issues and be no longer than three minutes. Our timekeeper, Mr. Shore, will provide a hand signal as the end of your three-minute approaches. Remember that the Board may not discuss or act on any issues that are not posted on our agenda for tonight's meeting. If you would wish to speak on the issue mentioned on tonight's agenda, the Board may defer your decision to speak until that appropriate time during the meeting. Ms. Scrivner, I have one Audience for Guest. Are there any more?
No, sir, there are none.
Very good. At this time, Ms. Tarpley, if you'll go to the microphone, introduce yourself.
Okay. Good afternoon, my name is Shirley Tarpley, 1507 Mileham Way in Carrollton, Texas. And what I wanted to talk about tonight is Black History Month. I cannot tell you the importance of black history. For one thing, everything that was invented by the black man or woman was something that would save their backs. And so, as I get older, that in turn helps me to appreciate them more. And as they were talking tonight about get out your little cell phones, did you know that it was a black man who invented the gamma cell that caused all of those cell phones to make it possible for you to da-da-da-da-dah? Okay, and then, how did you get here tonight? Did you drive your car? Well, do you know that battery was responsible for you getting here? And what about the savings that the shoe companies make? Because there was a black man who invented the machine to sew the sole to the bottom of the shoe. And thank God, I'm always glad when I can go through that automatic car wash and get my car washed. The iron and boiler. And whoever heard of the real McCray? Okay, I want you to know about that. So Mr. Carter, doctor, I'm sorry, Dr. Carter G. Woodson, is the one who one day decided that we need to let the world know of some of these things. And it's not just things that will save your back. Because I think about the black nurse who made it possible for something in your eye to make you see better. Or the nurse who made it possible for servicemen to eat their food. So these are some of the things that if you would just Google some of the inventions made by black people, you would appreciate them as much as I do. And thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Tarpley. Agenda Item 4B is our Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is a mechanism that the Board uses to approve a number of routine items together on a single vote. And in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the public notice for this meeting includes the list of all Consent Agenda items. And the Board has been provided ample information about these items in advance. Prior to any action taken on these Consent Agenda items, Board members may request withdrawal of individual items for clarification or discussion. At this time, Board members, are there any items to be removed from the Consent Agenda? Hearing none, seeing none? Do I have a motion for the Consent Agenda? Ms. Klein?
I would make a motion that we approve the Consent Agenda.
I have a motion by Ms. Klein. Do I have a second? Mr. Matthews? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. With that being said, Board members, I feel like it must be that you are eager to go home. Oh, okay. We'll move on to Agenda Item 5, which is comments from Board members. Board members, at this time, are there any comments you'd like to make regarding the posted agenda items or this meeting? Yes, sir?
Would like to remind us as a Board that a couple of meetings ago, we discussed the option of putting in place a committee to take a look at term limits. And I'd encourage us, because I don't know that we've gotten that completely accomplished yet, so I'd like to encourage us to get that done and be moving on that by our next meeting.
You're about a minute ahead of me because my item for discussion is appointment of a Term Limits Committee. And Mr. Fleming has agreed to chair that committee. Mr. Matthews will be serving on that committee, and Ms. Klein. And I would ask you to please get back a report not later than two months. If you are able to do it prior to that, that would be great. But at least allocate no longer than two months for a report. So with that being said, Board members, any further questions, comments? If not, I will, for the benefit of the record, I am going to read Agenda Item 6. Closed meeting is authorized under Texas Government Code, including but not limited to Section 551.071, Consultation with Attorney, 551.072, Real Property, 551.074, Person Nail Matters, 551.076, Security Devices, 551.082, School Children, District Employees, Disciplinary Matter or Complaint, 551.0821, Personally Identifiable Student Information, and 551.084, Investigation. Dr. Burns, do we have anything for closed session this evening?
No, sir, we do not.
With that being said, we will pass on Agenda Item 7 and Agenda Item 8, which I know you are eager for us to get to. By my determination, we have reached the end of our agenda, and we are adjourned at 8:16 PM. Board members, thank you.